This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Education Meeting for December 1st, 2020. Please take note that we continue our pandemic meeting procedures so that the Board of Education, the Brighton Central School District, in response to the continuing emergency circumstances caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, inconsistent with the New York State Governor's executive orders, will conduct tonight's public hearing, public meeting, excuse me, December 1st, 2020, at 7:00 PM, and to be held via Zoom and streamed through our district website via the webinar feature. In a moment, we will offer any members of the public who are with us this evening on our virtual meeting, the opportunity to participate during public participation. If you have joined the meeting and would like to either ask a question of the board or Dr. McGowan or offer a comment, we ask that you please now go to the chat feature at the bottom of the screen and put your name and your address in, and we will call on you. You're also welcome to contact the board directly via email, telephone, or postal mail. All of our contact information is on the district website. You can also direct any comments or questions directly to Dr. McGowan or to our Board Clerk, District Clerk, Kim Landsafen, and their contact information is also on the district website. Before we begin and offer the opportunity for public participation this evening, we are, due to the multiple circumstances changing minute by minute, hour by hour, often as things are concerned right at the moment with our orange zone designation in our operations currently under the COVID-19 pandemic rules, Dr. McGowan is going to offer an update, a brief update, as to circumstances and where we are, and then after that, we will offer the opportunity for public participation. So, Dr. McGowan.
Thank you very much. Let me just start here at the beginning. Good evening, and yes, things have changed quite a bit since our last meeting, and we wanted to give people a quick update as to what has changed, what that means, where we're heading. I think a lot of people in the community have a pretty good handle on this, but we recognize that we have a lot of viewers and other community members who don't receive all the district communication and might be wondering what is exactly happening. So, thank you for the opportunity to give people just a real quick update in a sense for what has been happening. I'm going to start out and just mention to you as soon as the slide moves here. We were first designated the week of November 16th as part of a yellow zone, according to the governor's micro cluster strategy. And in that, that environment, at that moment, we were required by the state to test 20% of our in-person population, so students and staff members. Originally, that was 20% in a week, and then 20% each week after that. Not unique individuals, but rather the concept of pool testing, so the testing of a cohort, for example, among a cohort, but it could be the same group, actually, each week. It wasn't unique individuals. We tested 750, we had zero positives, was 20% of our population, very, very positive. Once we got over kind of the mental roadblock of administering a test in school and what that would look like, it actually worked out really, really well, and hats off to our staff for making that happen, and our parents for participating in that and becoming involved. It really, again, worked well. We then found out we would only have to do that over two weeks, so the week of the 23rd of the Thanksgiving holiday, we knew that we wouldn't, or we were told we wouldn't have to be doing any tests. And towards the end of that week, feeling pretty good about our zero and, you know, a very low infection rate at school, I would continue to point out to people, at that time, it was 0.2%. Even since the beginning of the year, it's been just over 0.4%. That's 0.2 and 0.4, and at the time in the community, it was 3.49 in Monroe County. It's been all over the place, of course, since then as well. And we had no warning sign that we would be in an orange zone, did not expect that at all. It hasn't been something that we've noticed. And oddly enough, our infection rate being so low at school, you wouldn't think that the community would be reflective of needing to be in an orange zone, because even the kids that we are aware of, and I guess one way to look at this is the number of quarantine kids in school, or not in school, but at home, kids enrolled in school, was also very low, relatively low compared to other school districts and all of our neighbors. So, if there's a small number of kids quarantined, you'd think there'd be a smaller number of infections in the community, because if you live in a household with somebody who's a positive, you'd have to be quarantined. So anyways, none of the indicators told us that we would be in orange zone, and in fact, in talking to the public health people, it did not appear as though that was going to happen in our community. So, we were relatively surprised on the morning of the 23rd to find out that we would be included in one of the governor's micro cluster orange zones, and we were alerted to that fact and the need to begin making preparations. I've said it a number of times, and I'll point out again, County Executive Adam Bello and Monroe County Health Commissioner, Dr. Mike Mendoza, could not be more supportive, could not be more helpful, and their initial meeting with us immediately was, what do you need us to do to help you? How can we be there for you? They included in that conversation our town supervisor, Bill Malley, and the other districts and town supervisors that were involved in these conversations also. And Bill Malley and I had several conversations about how the town could help, and we appreciate that support also. I just want people to know there's a tremendous amount of intermunicipal cooperation and collaborative leadership happening that's been very helpful. So, we were alerted to this fact. Now, it's important to point out that when we first asked for consent to test in the yellow zone, we received consent back from 66% of the population. So, that left us with 34% either know or that we had not heard from, no response. And so, our initial actions were based on the fact that it appeared as though 34% were not able to test. And at that time, the orange zone requirements were, and as a matter of fact, everything we know right now is, the orange zone required you to close for four days, four calendar days, and test 100% of your population prior to them coming back to in-person, and then 25% each week after that, and 25% being unique individuals, not the same group. So, in other words, you have to consent to test, or you couldn't be a part of ongoing in-person operations. It also was unclear when the orange zone would start. So, at first, we were told that it could be the Monday after Thanksgiving, which would require a four-day closure the week after Thanksgiving. However, we did receive news later in this process that it would start on Thursday, actually on Thanksgiving Day, and it would give us four days, Thanksgiving Day, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, to clean and test everybody to come back on Monday. We still did not see that as a viable option, both the timing of that, but again, with only 66% having consented and the ability to test that number, we did not see that as a possibility. Now, another district locally, East Rondacoye, tested for only three of their buildings, smaller elementary buildings, and they were able to accomplish that testing to have kids come back, again, smaller population. We were the only district, I believe, although Gates may fall in this category too, I'm not positive, that the entire district was in the orange zone. It literally is the geography of where your school lies. Many people might be familiar with the decision by the JCC to close only a portion of their building that is actually in the orange zone, and a portion of their buildings in the yellows, and that's how specific these boundaries have been drawn. In any case, we began right away then considering what is the option for us and what would we need to do to have kids come back to school? And it really came down to getting consent from far more than the number we had, as close to 100% as possible, because any number of kids in the non-consenting category couldn't come to school, and we simply in our system don't have the best options, the best options for accommodating those that could not be in school, especially at the number we were thinking about in that 30% range. So, we began to inform the community right away that we knew initially we need to be closed, at least starting out the week of the 30th, and that we'd let people know by Wednesday, tomorrow, consequently tomorrow, what our status for the following week would be. And then we set about the task of trying to get as much consent back from people as possible, and thinking about, then what does that mean if we have a certain number of non-consenting people? What is the right number for that? What could we accommodate, and how could we accommodate that? So, the next steps from there, again, you know, begin that contingency planning around non-consents and begin the testing process, organizing that, getting the right people in place, et cetera, and prepare structurally for what it meant going forward. I've got to stop and say for a second, the nursing staff, security people, clerical staff members, administrators, buildings and grounds people, everybody involved in making this happen, really headed up by Nate Merritt, Lou Limal, Betsy Balling, making this work has been so, so impressive. Meanwhile, a whole nother group of people, our administrators, several staff members, trying to contact all of the people we hadn't heard from, offering translation services for those that needed it, social workers following up with people. It really was a very impressive all-hands-on-deck effort, and just so appreciate what everybody has done to make this happen. The results now, we needed to get 2,684 students. That's our current in-person population. So, remember, 20% of our population right now is remote, and this does not apply to remote students. We ended up with 97% consenting, 1% no, 1% maybe, and 1% with no response. 523 staff members total would also need to be tested. Our total tested as of today, right now, 2,912, huge number, really, really impressive. We have a total of 10 positive tests, which, and I meant to put this in the presentation, is a 3, is a .34, .34 positivity rate with that sample at this point. So, really, really happy that, again, a very small number are positive, but also that that many could be tested, and want to again thank everybody for coming out, getting tested, participating in the program. We have 295 tests yet to administer. We still have testing tomorrow, 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM at Brighton High School. Please come and get that test done. You still cannot attend in-person instruction or work if you are not tested. But, you might say, the governor announced changes. All along while this was happening, we were working on asking for changes, and many people in the community might be aware of the letter that we sent, and there were a lot of other conversations and meetings. And again, this speaks to County Executive Bello, our Health Commissioner, Mike Mendoza, Town Supervisor, Bill Malley, who also sent a letter, and many other people working behind the scenes, policymakers, our newly-elected representatives, and Sarah Clark, Assembly member, and Senator, State Senator-elect Jeremy Cooney, all this group of people providing feedback and input to the governor's staff and talking about what made the most sense in this moment, and how we could be helped by some thinking differently and practically about this. I am very glad to say to you that the governor announced changes, very significant changes, essentially moving towards a 20% of your population being tested over the course of a month if you're in the orange zone. We still do not know whether athletics can begin on Monday if we're in an orange zone. We're expecting clarification on that. We are planning on starting Monday, but that is another wrinkle that may come up. We're looking for clarity, though, on a couple of different things. One, on the 100% before returning issue. So, we get the 20% rolling over the month. We don't know if the 100% is gone or what the closure issue may be. We assume since our four calendar days that have elapsed already, we'd be fine. Tomorrow was already scheduled to be an all-remote day. But the issue that we're having is often throughout this whole situation since March, the governor will announce some sweeping changes to policy through a press conference, which is absolutely prerogative to do, but we in the field, in any governmental function, excuse me, have had to wait then for regulation to be published by the Department of Health or by the governor's office through executive order, because those details are really, and the expression's never been better used, the devil's in the details. Those tell us what this really means. And the governor, obviously, in a press conference, can't explain for hours on end every step in the regulation. So, we have to await those. He's talked a lot about K-8 populations, excuse me, not detailing what that means. So, we don't know yet what the regulation is relative to K-8 versus 9 through 12. How does this change? What does it mean for our non-consenting? Excuse me. This is, I really miss being in person. This is where one of our board members, Julian Gilbert, would probably slide a throat lozenge over and I'd stop choking. In any case, the issue for us right now is because we don't have that regulation, because we don't know exactly what this means, we need to continue to operate under what we understand to be the rules that we started this process with, because those very well may be the rules that we are held to, again, by the state. We don't make this up. This is what we are required to follow. So, we're working through that process and in constant touch with the people that do write the rules and enforce the rules, to ask more about what is it, what exactly does this mean? How does it impact our student population, our staff population? For the time being, those who could not test or chose not to test, for a wide variety of reasons that we respect, will be able to zoom into their classroom on their in-person days, because that is the only way we can accommodate them in a remote world. It's important to point out that in the current situation where we have people all remote, one, we have limited capacity remaining in those sections. Two, moving students into an all-remote section and then moving them back out is, provides no coherence whatsoever in terms of instruction for a child. And just imagine being an eight-year-old finding out that tomorrow, you're going to go to Mrs. Smith's class, when you've never been in that class, you don't know that teacher, you don't know that kid, those kids, and as much as they might try and make that a great experience for you, you're likely going to want to go back to your in-person class, I would assume, when this lifts, when it changes, when the zone changes, when the rules change, when the percentages change, and a week from now, we could be back to not being in a zone, et cetera, and it would be a really challenging way to be providing instruction than to have you go back to that class. We don't transfer kids in and out of class interchangeably like that in any circumstance. So, our best option at this point, even though it is not ideal pedagogically, which is why we didn't do it from the beginning, is to offer people the opportunity to zoom into their classroom. And again, we have, we had two concerns at the beginning. One was around the privacy of that classroom environment and the fact that my child, your child, everybody's child should not be exposed to the rest of the world during instruction to other people's living rooms. We expect there to be a certain level of privacy and them to have the ability to take chances in their learning without the scrutiny of everybody else who might be watching that instruction. That was one issue. The second issue was this issue of how do you service the kids in front of you, again, from a solid instructional pedagogical perspective, and service the kids who might be zooming in and picture the iPad sitting in the front row or on the rug next to the kids to be able to see it, to be able to hear it, but not to be able to engage the way a human being sitting in front of you can. And that kind of dual pedagogy, although some districts have chosen to do that, is not what we chose as the best instructional model for our kids. Although I will point out to you, going to school two days a week is not the ideal instructional model, and many of the things that we've had to adapt to in this current circumstance would not be what we would design from the beginning in terms of offering education to kids, which is why under normal circumstances, we don't teach this way. We've had to make adjustments along the way to do the best we can with the best we have to the best of our ability, and this is another example of that. So, this will help. The other factor that we've considered in making this decision is the notion that cases are on the rise significantly in the community, the greater Monroe County community, and that there will be more and more students and staff members in need of quarantining as the public health experts are seeing the numbers rise, and a great deal of concern over the holidays, the Thanksgiving peak, which will likely come soon. And then again, as people spend more time in small gatherings in people's homes and potentially spreading further, and the rates continue to go up, more and more quarantining will mean less and less people able to be in school, and the idea of being out for 14 days and getting work from a teacher can work on a limited basis, and that, again, was the best we could do at this point. We're seeing that the numbers are going to get much bigger, and felt like we needed to make this adjustment at this time to do, again, the best we can in something that's not ideal. So, going forward, COVID-related absences will also have the same opportunity to zoom into the classroom, and as we're doing our own connecting with families when their child's going to be out, they will be offered that opportunity and simply asked, would you like to be able to zoom then into the classroom on the days you would have otherwise been in person? And we don't plan on offering that as the remote option or an alternative remote option going forward for somebody to do that full-time or to be out of the building full-time. This would be only for the days that you would otherwise be in person, and then you would do the same asynchronous that you would have done with your cohort before. So, that's where we're at right now. We'll keep a very close eye on the regulations and on what comes out from the governor's office or the Department of Health over the next several days and make adjustments accordingly. Just want to give everybody an update as to where that was. Any board members have any questions that I can answer at this point?
I think, Kevin, you know, we have had the benefit of you keeping us posted multiple times per day lately, unfortunately, and I guess, thank you, first of all, and on behalf of the board, you said it, you expressed, but the board is extremely appreciative of all of our folks who are making this work, and the rules are changing so frequently and so often, but the effort being made by all of our folks to keep teachers and students together in every and any way possible, we sincerely appreciate. Also, I do want to give a shout-out from the board to our greater community for their support of coming forward and, you know, the feedback that we've been getting on the testing the last two days has been fantastic. It's going smooth. Parents are taking their students through. It's getting done, and we certainly appreciate everyone. The only way this ever works, and the only way we ever all get out of it, is that we're all in it together, and people recognize and realize that, and do everything that we all can individually, the number one, stay safe, wear a mask, stay distant, and wash your hands, but then also, when we need to take action, like we've had to the last few days, everybody gets on board to do that. So, we are extremely appreciative of all of that effort being done so that we can keep students and kids, students and teachers together, because we know it works, and we know it's the best thing for our kids. So, thank you.
You bet. Thanks, Mark.
At this point, we do offer the opportunity for public participation. I don't, we don't have a huge crowd tonight on the Zoom. We may have more watching on the webinar. Dr. McGowan, do you know if we have anybody wishes to speak?
No, I just want to point out, there is one particular attendee, and if that person cares who are wanted to offer public comment, if you could just enter your address in the chat and indicate that, I'd be happy to pull you up to ask a question or make a comment. If you want to, that's fine too, but I'm not seeing that, so, no, there's no public comment.
Okay. Thank you, then. We will, we will then move on. At this point, to the board members, please, a motion for approval of our agenda for this evening?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries six in favor, none opposed, and I make note that Board Member Julian Gilbert is not with us this evening, so there are six of us on the meeting. A motion, please, for approval of minutes from the November 27th, 2020 meeting?
A move. Second.
And that was moved by Sue.
Moved by Andrea, seconded by Sue.
Thank you very much.
I do have a correction on that form. I think Dr. Sacks is listed on that minutes form.
Did it say Sora Sacks? Did it say Marv?
I think at the attendee.
That's what we want to check, if there's anything that we need to correct or addition, deletions on those minutes from that meeting. Well, Marv was there in spirit. Marv is always in spirit. That's.
Agreed.
There's not a spirit section on the official.
Good catch, Christine. I see it. Right.
Let's take a look at that. I think.
Greatness present.
Somehow hacked the system or something, but okay, we'll clean that up. Thank you, Christine.
You know, for 25 years, we've been seeing his name. I think we're so used to seeing his name.
I think you're right. Does anybody have anything else to add or delete, correct for the minutes? Then with that notation and that correction, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's six in favor and none opposed. Tonight, we're going to receive an update on the Brighton facilities improvement plan, and I believe, Dr. McGowan, are you going to kick that off, or is that going to be Mr. Limal?
Lou, would you like to introduce it at all?
I'd love to. Thank you. So, we asked Eric Gruner to put together a video highlighting our new renovated auditorium at Brighton High School. So, he put together this, this video clip that we're about to watch, and a special thank you to Mike Struzik, Mike Leener, and Christopher Slater, our technical theater manager, for their narration and their comments. They've been an integral part of the team. They participated right from the design development, and I just can't, can't thank them enough for their participation. Thank you.
Really excited to be here in Brighton High School Auditorium as our crews are wrapping up the construction. There's still quite a lot of action going on in the area right now. We're getting very, very close, and wanted to share a quick set of highlights with you on the work that's been completed and some of the new aspects that we're excited to be able to put into place for our community.
So, some of the main highlights on the technical end, I'll talk about. I'm Christopher Schneider. I'm the technical director for Brighton Central School District. So, I oversee all your, all your theatrical and musical spaces. In this one, some of the biggest highlights is a full state-of-the-art sound system combined with a state-of-the-art lighting and rigging system. With lighting, one of the biggest advancements, aside from going all LED, is we now have the ability to fully light any area within this entire auditorium. A lot of that came from the use of the catwalk being installed. Previously, once you left the stage area, you really didn't have any way to light the space. They were always dark in the pit, even further out into the house. You really couldn't add light and enhance the program that way. So, by adding a catwalk into the project, we were able to maneuver the lights into positions to create a fully immersive experience inside the theater when we want to. Everything inside this space, lighting, rigging, which is what you hang your curtains and everything from, and sound is completely new and state-of-the-art. We have new line array speakers, which will help ease the audience into hearing much better than the old speakers. All the lighting in this space is LED lighting, so that means it can, with the push of a single button, change to any color you can imagine within the space. So, that's going to really help all the theatrical productions, musicals, plays, pitch black, mock and nets, any of those type of shows where you usually have some more kind of concert lighting. It's going to really help those.
Yep. I'm Mike Struzik. I'm the facilitator for music six through 12 and the high school band director. The thing I'm most excited about, to be honest, it looks beautiful. It absolutely, absolutely looks totally different when you see it. For me, it was all about sound and the acoustics. The thing that excited me the most was that this was designed with the help of an acoustician. It's a totally remodeled space, new sound panels on the walls. It will sound consistent throughout the entire house, and the best thing for the students is we have a whole re-engineered stage with a floating sound panel system that can be adjusted for different groups. So, if there's a chorus up there, we can adjust the panels in one way. If there's a band up there, we can adjust them in another way. With the old stage, what would happen is you play on there, and the sound would go up, and then random things would come back down. Now, we're going to be able to control that a lot more, where the sound from the stage is actually going to come out into the audience, and it'd be a much clearer sound, cleaner sound, and that's what I'm most excited about.
One of the biggest design factors we looked at when originally talking about this space is that we didn't just want the space to be good when we open up the doors, we also wanted to think about the program needs further down the road. So, we designed this space to be fully expandable and scalable for any number of performances and productions. So, it'll fit and work well for a small acoustic orchestra concert, all the way up through our large-scale musicals and stuff like that.
I'm also really excited about some of the new design features in the space that allow for more accessibility for our patrons, starting with the lobby itself. We've built in some very nice art exhibition areas where students can display not only 2D but 3D artwork, so people can enjoy the work of our visual artists. And then, once you're in the space, we've really accentuated the accessibility with increased numbers of handicap accessible seating areas. We also have a ramp now that runs from the back of the house all the way up onto the stage, so that anyone could get onto the stage at any time, and accessibility into and out of the space is greatly enhanced. Additionally, we have electronic enhancements for accessibility as well. We've added in an FM hearing loop system for patrons who may require a little bit of hearing assistance to fully enjoy our shows. All of this, really, everything that all of us has talked about today, really adds up to, we finally have a space here in Brighton, in our high school, that matches the quality of the work that the students are presenting for their audiences. So, we're super proud to have this space available. It's been a long wait as the project has. available. It's been a long wait as the project has, has unfolded. But it's been worth every minute of it and I'm just super excited to be able to open it up and have students performing again in this space. Thank you all for all of your support as we've gone through this project and all of your backing and patience along the way as well.
That's just fantastic, Lou. Thanks for, for working with Eric to put that together and for all the work that's been done all over throughout the district. But this particular project, I know people have been anxiously waiting. So we're really excited to unveil that. And great work to all of you and to Larry Davis, where our board members played, has played a really significant role in this process also on the committee. So great, great work, everybody.
Yeah, boy, it looks fantastic. And you know, I think all of us have been talking about just at the initial looks inside and to, you know, it's been a long time, as was mentioned a few times, and but it's just a magnificent space. And I think we all now, you know, looking forward to the fact, to the, to the time and the hopefully not too far distant future when we can fill it and see our kids on stage. So thank you to all. Lou, thanks for putting, Eric Gruner, thanks for putting it all together and the three of you for narrating and putting it together for the community. So we appreciate that. We move on tonight. We have principal reports and we need positive information and entertainment from all four of our principals and no pressure here, but look side, look inside our buildings to talk about activities. So we'll start off as we traditionally do and hear from Council Rock. So Matt Tappens, sir.
All right. So no pressure, like you said. All right. So I actually have lost track of time and was reminded that we had not shared Halloween. So we did have Halloween. Unfortunately, I only had pictures of myself. But Mrs. Jefferies and I dressed up as Superman and Superwoman. And then we found through our two days, so if you remember, we did Thursday and Friday celebrations with our hybrid students. Throughout the day, our goal was to find as many superheroes that we could take pictures. So we have several smaller versions of Superman and Superwoman who took pictures and posed with us during, during the day. So again, different, different celebrations, but kids really loved getting in their costumes and we were glad to provide that opportunity for kids to have celebrations in their classrooms. So as we've moved on, we've moved kind of from the, the harvest season to kind of the season of gratitude and Thanksgiving. And one project that popped up that I just loved was we've been really looking at opportunities for kids who are in that remote setting as well as in the hybrid setting to connect and to have those remote students really feel part of the part of our community and kind of how are we inviting them in? Mrs. Aiello was a hybrid teacher at first grade and Mrs. Bruce, who was one of our remote teachers at first grade. So in their conversations at first grade about urban rule and suburban and they talked about the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade, did some research on the Macy's Thanksgiving Parade and then created these amazing displays called Balloons Over Broadway where students chose their favorite characters from books, from, you know, pop culture to recreate the Macy's Parade. You can't really see it, but down here at the bottom, those are all pictures of the students being the balloon holders. And then they incorporated writing into that. So here you can see one is elephant, the pigeon, piggy. You had some superheroes, but then they had to write a persuasive writing on why their balloon was the best in the parade and convince people why. It just was a really feel-good, awesome project. And I loved that it was kind of a combination between those remote classrooms and the hybrid classrooms. So we're going to continue to look for those opportunities to bring those students who are still Council Rock students kind of into the building figuratively to make sure that we all feel part of that culture as we will be together soon, I hope. Another tradition kind of at, at Thanksgiving, I've often received some persuasive writing to me personally as the principal about why a turkey should, from the turkeys telling me why we should eat something other than turkey. However, there were several teachers, Mrs. Sayers, second graders and Ms. Bennett's first graders. So this was first graders who were tasked with disguising their turkeys. So this one is disguised as a Hershey Kiss. I think this is Aquaman, some kind of a superhero. Several of the kids know how much I love the Bills. So I think this is a Bills player and a peacock. And there were very ingenious different ways. And then again, persuasive writing about how to save a turkey, eat more potatoes, eat more, all the reasons why we should not eat a turkey. So putting kids, giving kids a great opportunity to be creative, imaginative, but also, you know, share some fun. This was a project and I know Mrs. Yurlees is in here still as one, as our teacher rep. But this was a project that she told me was completely inspired by Steve Jenkins artwork, the Beatle book and its palindrome Beatle poetry and then some beautiful painting. I believe it's watercolor. And they were studying symmetry. So they were talking about that and the kids created not only the the poetry, but also these beautiful works of art with the Beatle and it was all inspired by Steve Jenkins and his book and art. So just beautiful. And then finally tonight, again, along the gratitude idea was some gratitude writing from Mrs. Linton's second graders that looked at a bilingual book called Gracias, Thanks by Pat Mora. And after they read that, the students did some research and talked about what they were thankful for to the picture, but then also did some research on how to say that in Spanish. So Hazel was grateful for the zebra, which is a great thing to be grateful for. But they all kind of shared snowflakes and then what it looked like in, in Spanish. Upcoming, so the next three Wednesdays, just a reminder to families that we are going to continue with our parent teacher conferences. If you have not signed up for our parent teacher conference, now's the time to please be in touch with your teacher to make one of those connections. I know the teachers, you know, were a little wary about what it looked like on a Zoom as many of us were about Zoom in general, but I think they're finding them to be very successful to connect with families, be able to share what they've learned and then gather information from the parents about their, their children. So for the next three Wednesdays, we will have those half days, live Zooms in the morning, but then afternoons where teachers will be meeting with families. And then just a reminder, this year, again, because of the different cohorts on Monday, December 21st and Tuesday, December 22nd, we will have two days worth of stay in your PJs and read day. And I know that we're doing things a little bit different again via Zoom for our special guests. We hope that some board members may engage with some of our reading. It's a little bit different, but we're hoping to actually might even be easier because you can stay where you are and you can zoom right into the classroom. So excited about that. And just a reminder that those are days in school. Again, when I started here, we called it stay in bed and read and there was a lot of confusion because people thought they got to stay home that day. Nope. This is in school, in your PJs, but we'll be doing reading activities leading us right into that holiday break from the 23rd through January 1st. All right. Any questions?
Thank you so much, Matt. And again, thanks, I mean, for all of you, the ongoing effort to connect the kids, no matter what learning platform they're on, you know, our remote kids, our hybrid kids, keep everybody connected, keep everybody included. It's fantastic that everyone keeps making that effort to keep sure, to make sure that happens. So thanks for sharing that. We appreciate it.
Thanks.
Dr. Rio in French Road Elementary School.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. We will do some updates also from French Road and didn't put any Halloween pictures of Caitlin or me in here, but we did have our first drive-through the bus loop and Light It Up With Pumpkins event because of COVID. And I think that it was really awesome. Even though it was something that we did a little bit differently to try and engage our kids in some Halloween excitement because we couldn't do all the typical things that we do at French Road. But it was something that we probably continue on any year because it was rather easy and fun. I drove through it and it was great to see many different families there. My own family enjoyed it, but just carving pumpkins and sharing them and celebrating Halloween. And then I'll highlight some classrooms and things that are going on a little bit around the building. But these are just a couple of pictures of Mrs. Forsyth and Mr. La Paglia's PE class and even during PE, they take some time to engage into some mindfulness activities. And this is an example of something that they were working on in there. Building cup towers, having to wait five seconds to make sure it didn't fall and then adding more cups to see how tall they can get it and for our kids to just stop for a few minutes sometimes and take that mindfulness break has been really powerful. So these are some of our fifth graders engaging in that activity. And in tech classes, we've been looking at doing things a bit different. Usually our kids are on tech on the iPads in tech classes and right now Mrs. Harp and Mr. O'Neal are pushing into classrooms and we're looking at trying to limit some of the tech time that the kids have because we know they have a lot going on on technology. So Mrs. Harp has been working with her classes on building tiny houses and these are some fifth grade students from Mr. Simmons class who are working on their tiny houses and they finished them up just a couple of weeks ago, but they ran the, some electrical through there and they built it with whatever they brought in from home or whatever Mrs. Harp had at school for them to use. And you can see a few different examples here of what the kids put together. They really enjoyed that and it was a different project. Again, something that we hadn't done at French Road before, but we are doing now in light of COVID and the kids really enjoyed that. And I have a couple of slides to highlight. I continue to be so proud of our instrumental music teachers because every time I see what they're doing, I'm just so impressed at the experiences our fourth and fifth grade kids are continuing to get in instrumental music, even though they are not doing this in the building. It's all on Zoom and all either at our Remote Kids Home Days or on the home hybrid independent days with our IM teachers. And this is a group lesson at the top here that Mr. Dozer put together of a bunch of kids in a large group practice and then an example of some of our fourth graders who are just learning how to play the French horn. So their first year with an instrument and honestly, sitting in these lessons, it sounds like you would hear right in the building at French Road. It's just so impressive and I'm so proud of our teachers and our kids, everybody for doing the best they can and making the best out of the situation. But honestly, they're doing great. Here are some pictures of Mrs. Aysham's fourth grade students and fifth grade students in two different strings lesson groups. And again, you can just see the kids are doing great. They're very happy. They're enjoying these lessons and the participation has been pretty high too at French Road, which is awesome. Our third graders this fall finished up some star quality units. And these are just a few examples of some of the work that the kids put together in Mrs. Cannon's third grade class. And to bring the class together, teachers have been sharing in lots of different ways. And one of the things that Mrs. Cannon did is to have all of the kids in both cohorts post on Seesaw so they can see the work that everybody was doing and comment across the class, the whole entire class. These are a few examples again, but I love the way that she brought the kids together in that way to kind of connect them over the work that everybody's doing, even though they're there on different days. And here are some of Mrs. Burkato's third grader sharing their shirts that they made as part of the unit too. And these are some of our fourth graders in Mrs. Fallon's class who were working on a STEM challenge. And this is something she does every year, but again, just continuing to engage the kids in a little bit of a different way. So they did this on their own instead of in a small group, but they still had a great time and working on building the tallest tower possible with 20 marshmallows and 18 spaghetti noodles. So these are some of our fourth grade kids learning some, engaging into some STEM activities. And I had to take a picture of this third grader because she always dances into school every day. And thanks to the BEF, we have put some wireless speakers outside both of our entrances at French Road for bussers and our kids who are dropped off in the morning so they can start their day with some music because music definitely makes most kids smile. Not every kid unfortunately, but most kids are happy to either dance their way in, sing along, or you know, at least get a smile on their face to start their day. And we have a special buddy bench for Mila Rongspawna on our playground now and that's been being enjoyed by many French Road students. It's definitely a special bench. If you drive by on Edgewood, you could see it right from the road. And put together by art teacher Mrs. Bertner who kind of took the lead with some suggestions from Mr. Rennie's class last year on what could possibly go on this bench to help us remember a wonderful student, Mila. And the back was decorated by her mom and her sister. So it's very special to everyone at French Road and especially her family and her friends. And it's nice to have a piece of Mila on the playground with us every day. Upcoming events again, actually pretty much identical to Mr. Tappens. We have our family teacher conferences, three days coming up in three Wednesdays in December. And we have school-wide PJDs also two days to accommodate all of our hybrid learners and remote students hopefully can engage both days to enjoy that as well. And that will take us through the month of December until our holiday recess. That's all for Front Road tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you, Allison. Again, you know, making it work, you know, we forget sometimes I think about our music, our arts, phys ed, seeing the phys ed class in person. You know, it's just fantastic that our teachers are figuring out a way to make it work and kids are just still learning in the most unique experience of their lives likely and and having fun and making it work. So thank you again for sharing that out there. Next, we move over to 12 Corners Middle School. And on my screen is Principal Jim Nunes. There you are. Hi, Jim.
All right. Thank you very much. So as I go through, we will touch on some of the highlights that we've had for the past month and the exciting things that have happened. First off here, I know we've talked a lot about the renovations that we've had at TCMS and a lot of the photos have focused on the library. Here we have some images of our art rooms that have been fully renovated. And now that they've come to completion, they're in great shape. Students are using them. Teachers are excited about the space that we've had there. So you know, it's been nice to have them fully complete and functional at this time. In addition to that, before we had completed our device distribution, we are now fully one-to-one at TCMS. Our sixth and seventh graders now have devices. That was a a very well thought out plan. Took us the span of six days over the course of two weeks to get all these devices distributed, but all of our students are now fully equipped with devices, software updated. And you know, we are really excited about that opportunity moving forward. And all of our students are excited about it as well. Actually got the text earlier today from Dr. Leener informing us that all of our students have been up to date, software is up to date and we're fully one-to-one now. So it's really exciting for us. For thank you for that opportunity for us to be at this place and we're very excited about that. We had also happy news, new additions to the family at TCMS, two of our staff members. We knew that they were expecting, but we didn't know that both families would go ahead on the same day and have both babies on the same day. So Zach O'Neal and Rob Childs both welcomed new additions to their family a couple of weeks ago and we're very excited for them. And you know, we were, like I said, completely had no idea that they were going to have it on the same day. So that was really great news and great news for us to share with them. Some community service opportunities are taking place over the Thanksgiving break. TCMS raised over 200 cans of vegetables that were donated to the Center of Youth. And with that, we had, there were over 60 holiday meals that were delivered to teens whom the service, the center on service, so that we're really excited about that. And currently we are in our second annual coat drive for school 33 of the Rochester City School District. Now into the 11th of December and accepting gently used clean coats, especially children's sizes to donate to those schools. And knowing that they're going to create children in need and we're happy to do that. And with that, we also have our TCMS wall of thanks. Mrs. Coils in her extended studies program and the students had this nice wall decorated as we're walking through the halls and all of them putting out kind words of thanks and things that they were all thankful for. So it was a really nice way to walk through the hall, seeing that throughout really made it special. And so closing out with upcoming events, we have our, on December 3rd, Brighton Family Colors Group Meeting at seven o'clock on the 14th, the PTSA Diversity Equity Inclusion Group Meeting along with the holiday recess coming up in school reopening on the 4th. Oh, Mark, now you're muted.
You did it to me. Anyway, the slide on community service, you know, thank you for including that. We sort of forget about all of these other things that are going on and still making a difference. And all four of the buildings this year have been able to still include those communities. And all four of the buildings this year have been able to still include those community service projects, not all of them and certainly not the same. But you know, we've sort of, that's been a little bit on the back burner and I appreciate that you included that slide because that's so important and the kids are so enthusiastic about that. So again, being able to maintain and keep moving forward on these things that are so important to each age group and time of their lives. So thank you for including that slide also.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Onto Brighton High School and Dr. Tom Hall.
Hey, good evening, everybody. We actually added a new display that's right next to the Maya Angelou painting that I shared with you a couple of board meetings ago. For some of you who don't know, our Kid Cancer's Button Club, which was started in 2005 after the death of Jonathan Angelo, student who passed away just about a year after graduation or a little over a year. And he has a scholarship in his name and it's been given every year and this club's been going ever since 2005, 2006. And they created this big display. It's, it doesn't give it justice from this picture, but it's right in our hallway as well and just kind of expressing, you know, everybody has someone who they've lost to cancer, fighting cancer, have made it through cancer. But Kid Cancer's Button Club is still going. Continuing to spread our, you know, wear the mask, socially distance, washing your hands, coughing and sneezing your elbows. It's a mantra at the high school, you know, people are getting a little bit tired, but we're pushing and asking people to do that almost every day and want people to do it. And we're very excited because we had our clubs start up on November 2nd. So we've been having kids meeting virtually, but then a few after school and lots of pictures of those coming up probably in January. We also have after school, school help going and I know the kids and teachers have been relieved to be able to meet with kids after school. And we've gone back to one flex period instead of two and knock on wood, it is, we've been able to manage it and manage even with the cold days when everybody's inside to keep everybody in their places, not in the hallways, but eating where they need to be or getting help. These pictures certainly don't just give the auditorium justice compared to what Lou shared with the video, but it is an amazing place right now and I just can't wait to see our first show and first performances. So on the sides of the stages, a long wheelchair accessible ramp along the side of the, I guess it would be on stage left. And it's quite an amazing addition and the catwalk, it's amazing. Something that our counseling department, thanks to Travis Figueroa, one of our new counselors, he acquired a grant from the Brighton Education Fund. So once again, I want to thank the BEF for giving us 10 standalone virtual reality headsets, which I have a couple of pictures of. Obviously, kids can't go on a lot of college visits, nor are they having college visits in many places. So our kids can actually put on these goggles and virtually take a tour of a college, any college around the US or around the world. And these are, I put them on and tried it out. It's quite amazing. And it's going to be the future of college visits for a lot of students who just either don't have the time or maybe don't have the resources to go on a visit to the actual college. But these virtual headsets have been able to allow students to do that. So here's a display of some of them in a close-up view. And you can actually see in the eyeball of one of them, they're looking out at one of the campuses. So this is what you would see if you were there. You see people actually walking into a building and it's as if you were walking on the campus. Oops. And here are a couple of our counselors who I didn't, I missed the pictures with the kids, but they're trying them on that day, having a lot of fun. And students were asked if they were wanting to come down, they can make an appointment and put on the headsets and that's ongoing. And thank you again to the BEF. One of our classes with Katie Mailey, full remote. You know, we've had our ups and downs sometimes with fully remote classes. Some kids don't want to turn their video on for whatever reason. You know, it's, it's at times hard to engage everybody because you don't see them together and get the facial expressions that are happening. But Katie shared with me a very, just a bright spot where, you know, they've had their classes and all of a sudden their projects were done. And then she had them do a critique and each student took the Zoom, as I'm doing now, they would present, share their artwork on their Zoom. Kids would give critique and feedback and she said it was probably one of the best classes she had. Even kids who would have black screens were participating and turning on their videos to show their artwork. So you know, there was, there's, there's victories along the way and we'll take them when we get them. Quarter one failure report. So since I've been principal at the high school, been sharing this historical trend with you, you know, going back to 10, 11 and 11 and 12, 16, 15% of the high school students back then failing one or more classes. You know, unfortunately with 2020, 2021, with our hybrid classes, remote, nothing's quite ideal. We doubled our failure rate from 8.6% to 16.9 in this first quarter. We're reviewing all those right now. Interventions being put in place. I mean, you name an intervention or something that we've tried, the counselors, administrators, teachers have been bending over backwards to work with our students. So we're obviously hoping to get back to a normal period. We've been seeing a huge decrease in the first quarter for all the different things we put in place to support students who might struggle. And unfortunately, again, we've doubled that for this quarter. But as we move ahead, hoping that with our interventions, we're going to see a change in that for the second quarter. Homecoming murals. So we're almost complete with our murals. We had to put a little stop on the Saturday work after the orange zone came in, but the homecoming murals are still being completed. Freshmen and sophomores are pretty much done. Our seniors and juniors got a little work to do, but we'll display them when they're ready. And of course, what will be the next Brighton mascot, you may ask. It's down, thanks to with the work of Dr. McGowan, a bobcat, a bulldog or a Bruin, which is a female bear, if you didn't know that. Oh, there it is. Bulldog, a bear and bobcat, you know, different images here. I'm very excited. And then of course, you know, looking at the different costumes that we can get people wrapped up in, Nate and I have been exploring. Whatever is chosen by the students, we will definitely go full go to try to promote it and get some excitement around the district. And Kevin provided a slide to the group that's doing the mascot, the committee that's putting together the three ideas that they came up with. The artworks being collected on the 16th, the committee will be meeting again. And then there'll be some sort of vote, K-12 and the class 2020. And no, no administrators will be voting and no administrator will have any influence over the vote. It will be strictly the students. And then on the 23rd, which is pretty exciting, the day before the holiday break, before we go into New York, people will hear and know what the new mascot is. We also have a class t-shirt day from homecoming, class t-shirts. Everything's delayed, but we are going to have class t-shirts. Very exciting. They'll be sometime mid-December. And then I have a PTSA meeting tomorrow night with a Q and A. So that's what we have going on at the high school.
Dr. Hall, will the 23rd give you enough time to get the mascot outfit you were hoping for, for, for the holidays?
I don't know. I'm probably going to be able to get some sort of gear, but you know. Not probably.
Mrs. Hall have enough time to order it for you and get it overnight on the 23rd?
She's probably got three things already ordered, one of each, and then she'll give me whatever one.
And just really easily return it. That's great to hear. Yeah. So just a reminder to people, mascot@BCSD.org, mascot@BCSD.org to submit your logo choices. Don't let Dr. Hall be the only one who submitted those choices. Feel free to send in. And if you want to drop them off here at the office also in hard copy of drawing, we'll have the committee look at that too. The committee will choose the logo that goes with each of those three choices, as Dr. Hall explained, on the 16th and then on the, for the vote, all kids K through 12 will vote and the class of 2020. Because we did take the mascot away there in June and change it. And frankly, the class of 2020 lost quite a bit at the end of their senior year and we want to keep them engaged in a way that we think is really positive as new alumni. So looking forward to them voting too. I'm very excited to unveil whatever the new mascot will be. So mascot@BCSD.org, send in your choices. A huge committee, we didn't turn a single person away, by the way, from the committee, adults or kids, and it was an awesome discussion. Larry Davis, Christine Lee were both on that as alums also. And we had just fantastic discussion with tons of kids providing great feedback. And after we pick the logo as a group and vote on it, adults will get out of the way because it is the kids mascot. So we're really excited about that.
And did you, am I clear that, that on the 23rd, it's a live Zoom with Dr. Hall on the new auditorium stage with the new fancy lighting and sound coming from the back area behind curtains with the proper mascot on? Is that the costumed up? Is that what we're working on?
Well, you don't know. We're thinking actually about having three unknown individuals, like a masked singer in, in the costumes. It may be some kind of special unveiling. And I just, I want to thank Mr. Limo for volunteering to be in one of those costumes and Mr. Tappan as well. It should be exciting. I'm just kidding. We're going to just let people know by email probably.
That's a great idea though, Mark. I kind of like it.
Punch you around here, Mr. Kikonovich.
This is the kind of thing we need right now in these times, right? So thank you so much. And, and Tom, thank you for the report on the high school activities. I, I think what you, you just went through and all four of you always highlight is we're making it work, we're innovating. You're, you're all figuring it out. Our teachers are figuring out how to make it work. You know, the clubs and, clubs and organizations getting started again. I think it's just fantastic, all the effort being made to make things as, as interesting and exciting and beneficial to students as we possibly can. So again, our continued thanks. A couple of other items of business this evening, we do have, I'll ask the board, please, for a motion on second read policy 3421, Community Relations Title IX and Sex Discrimination, please.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Larry, seconded by Andrea. And you recall the board, just a reminder, at the first read, this is a 19-page policy. It's a new policy. And it's the United States Department of Education amended the regulations originally, the original Title IX of the Educational Amendments Act of 1972, they made drastic changes too. And so these are, this is the new policy to meet those regulations. I do not have anything further from the first read. Does anybody else have anything to add or a question? That all in favor? Any opposed? We are six in favor and none opposed. Then our consent agenda this evening, and Dr. Hall, I'm going to call on you in a second again, if you don't mind. A motion, please, for approval of our consent agenda.
So moved?
Second.
And the move was?
Who's me? Sue?
No, I'm sorry. I need to organize a screen better there. I think the second was Karen.
Christina.
Christina.
You got one out of seven guesses, so it's all right.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We will have to go back to the hands. So the consent agenda, which we normally don't discuss, it's only got one item. This is approving the Class Council of 2020 Scholarship Fund, which is really an interesting gift to future class, senior classes. Dr. Hall, if you wouldn't mind, you had some conversation, I believe, with the class officers around this gift. Am I correct in that? Do you have anything to add?
I could add something.
Never mind. You, let's ask Christina.
Yeah, I've had a few conversations.
Sorry, that's my fault. He didn't know that I was going to call him, so I'm.
The treasurer.
I didn't know. Christina certainly would have something to do or something involved with Christina, share.
Go ahead, Dr. Hall, you start.
Well, it was a while ago when we had this conversation about students from the class 2020 wanting to donate money for future students to use.
And we should say, to preface, Tom, normally in a normal year at graduation, at the graduation ceremony, that class would come forward with gifts in whatever way that they determined appropriate, to future classes, to the school, to whatever. Having not a regular, normal graduation opportunity, this was left to other means. So you had conversation with them, right, about what they want to do? I'm sorry.
Correct. Different members of the Student Council and Christina's daughter was part of that. And after our conversation, she took it from there. And I guess I'll ask Christina to just kind of share where it finally landed.
Well, I think the Class Council decided that they wanted to, you know, they had a larger pot of money this year, of course, since they weren't able to spend much of it. So they wanted to just have the longevity of the impact of their class going forward. So they have enough money for 20 years. And I think, you know, they're thinking as the years go on, they'll try to extend that 20 more years as they donate themselves to the fund. So it's a great legacy for that class.
This is a gift of $10,000 to be awarded to a senior going forward at $500 a year. And they, so they want to perpetuate that. And what a, what a great gift and what a great legacy for a class that really went through some very unusual circumstances. So.
And part of what they want to do is stamp the class of 2020 on it to recognize the crazy year that they went through, the pandemic, the whole bit, and kind of keep some, I guess, add some positive flair to what has happened this year and be able to give out that kind of money for years to come.
That's fantastic. What a, what a wonderful, thank you both. And what a wonderful gesture from that class and those class officers. So that, we are, by our approval is this evening, approving that, that 2020 Class of 2020 Scholarship Fund. So all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you very much. Six in favor and none opposed. Board members, anything further, any further items of business this evening that anyone has? Dr. McGowan, anything further this evening?
Nope. Keep your masks on. Stay away from other people. Love them from a distance.
Stay safe, please. Yes. We next meet on December 15th, two weeks from this evening. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's six in favor and none opposed and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and we appreciate you tuning in. Good night.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.